Good evening, it's 7:00 PM. We'll call to order the meeting of the City Council for January 24th, 2011. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance led by Boy Scout Troop 321. Gentlemen.
I'll grab front and center. I'll guard, prepare to present the colors. I'll guard, advance. Will the audience please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll guard, close the colors. The audience may proceed. I'll guard, retreat.
Item number two, changes to the order of agenda. Mr. Malpe, any changes?
No changes this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Item number three, report from closed session. Mr. Ribbons.
No reportable items from closed session today.
Item number four, council communications and announcements. These are general announcements. I'll start from the right. Mr. Grisilli.
I have nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Klein.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Mr. Royce.
Yes, I actually do. A couple items. One is, as you all know, Recology, which is basically our new recycling garbage company, just started January 1st. And of course, this startup is with 12 cities, so there's thousands and thousands of people that they've started doing business with. There's been a few issues and so forth the first month of service. There's been a few phone calls that are coming in, of course, some areas not getting picked up and so forth. Just want to ask everybody's patience during this startup exercise. And I know there's some issues with the 20-gallon can sometimes not emptying all the way. On the other hand, though, I do ask all of our citizens not only to be patient, but you know, they do have a role in trying to make it as easy as we can for our workers that start at 6:00 AM. I've noticed, of course, they've asked for recycling bins to be separated by one, two feet between bins. Sometimes people are putting them right next to each other. On the drive down to City Hall, I saw one driveway with the bins actually stacked up lengthwise going down their driveway versus out into the street. Also, let's see here, the, I've noticed too, in our neighborhood, when they're picking up those cans, you have to realize there's machinery that is picking up a bin, bringing it straight up into the air and dumping it about 25 feet into the top of the truck. One of our neighbors has a tree, and he puts his bin right under that tree. And of course, the equipment ends up hitting and breaking some of the branches, so be alert to that. And then I've also noticed on the website, they've asked for, you know, just trying to handle the service calls, any changes in service. You want to change to a larger can or a smaller can, or any questions they're asking to, any changes of service to wait till February 1st to call, maybe giving them the entire month to try to handle all the more of the priorities items. But with that, again, we'll have, of course, great sabers. We are always very agreeing of a great recycling program, single-stream recycling and so forth. So I think it's going to work out really, really well for us. And that's it.
Mr. Grocott.
I just have something a little in jest because Mr. Mayor made a comment at the Citizens Gala with the Chamber about the East Bay in Nevada and so forth. And I just wanted to tell you that on Saturday, I did take a trip to Pollock Pines, and on my way, of course, I went through the East Bay. It's very nice over there. And then after we visited in Pollock Pines on Saturday, we got up on Sunday morning and drove to Nevada. I have a client there, and my nephew lives in Nevada, and it was very nice there, too. Very nice people and everything. So I just wanted to report that I made it back.
Good to know that you made it back safely. Did you want to talk about the crab feed?
Oh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, as a mayor, as a member of the Lions Club, just wanted to report that we do have a crab feed this Saturday at Mahaney Hall, and you can approach just about any lion, like the one in the back here, for tickets if you'd like. And I believe that starts at 6 o'clock, is that right? Yeah, 6 o'clock.
Terrific. Just a few quick announcements. First, congratulations to the junior matrons. They celebrated their 75th anniversary with a rockin' band, some darn good food, and it was a great time. I wish I could have spent a little bit more time there. I got there a little bit late toward the end of the celebration, and I may bring to council at some point, we may need to make their brownies illegal because I could only just stand there and keep eating the things. It was terrible. For those of you interested in Caltrain, there is a meeting on Saturday for the Friends of Caltrain. This meeting will start, doors will open about 8:30 AM, will go, start promptly at 9:00 AM, and this is to talk about different ways to save Caltrain. And also, this is the Week of the Family. If you go to San Carlos, weekofthefamily.org, you will be able to see all of the things that are going on. Mr. Royce just handed me a sheet of some great things to do in San Carlos, and one of them is Tuesday is Cook's Night Out. Deals include 20% off of barbecue places and various restaurants, so just take a look at that. Take Cook's Night Off, which is great. That being the end of council announcements, we'll go to item number five, presentations. And we have a couple of Eagle Scouts with us, so I'm looking forward. Gentlemen, if you can step up here, I'll come and give you a little chat. And this microphone does work. Gentlemen, thank you for coming here. Thank you for the pledge, and as I understand, all of you gentlemen have now earned your eagle. Is that correct? Everybody's nodding, even though you don't have the right patches on yet. Is there going to be a larger ceremony for that? Terrific. Let me ask you to introduce yourself, what school you go to, and if you could tell us just a little bit about what your eagle project was.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Philip DeTurke. I am a senior at St. Francis High School in Mountain View. I went to Tierra Linda in San Carlos, and I went to Arundel before that. My Eagle Scout project was to create an emergency supply storage shed in Arguello Park, and I worked with CERT, which is the Community Emergency Response Team, as well as the San Carlos and Belmont Fire Department and Police Departments. I collected, I think it was estimated at above $4,000 worth of emergency supply equipment, including tools, medical equipment, and water, and all the kinds of things someone would need in a citywide disaster. And then we also created a room which we could portion off from the whole room which the summer camp uses, so. Thank you.
My name is Jordan Ginsburg. I'm a senior at Uniberal High School in San Mateo. My eagle project was a rose garden in the courtyard of my school, which acquired $540 of fundraising and approximately 167 hours of manual labor and planning.
My name is Ryan Fang. I'm a senior at Crystal Springs Health and School, and my senior project was the tearing down and replacing of a billboard as you exit the campus for PTA announcements. They post banners on it, and I was funded $450 by the PTA and about 140 man-hours done.
And all of you brought members of your family here with you today? Can we ask members of the family to stand up? I know you guys put in a lot of work for this, but so did they, so they deserve that applause. Thank you very much, and we're proud to be able to recognize your achievement of eagle and just what it means. And we have a proclamation. They read roughly the same, but essentially what we are saying here, it's kind of neat, we've got the gold seal and all that other good stuff, and a few whereas's, but what we want to say is that the Boy Scouts is just a tremendous group. We appreciate what they do to help build character for young Americans, and we appreciate your leadership. We're looking forward to your next step, and I can see everybody here is Order the Arrow, too, so that's extremely cool. Okay, I was a former scout, trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent. Congratulations. And there is one additional proclamation for Chris Cusper, who was not able to make it here tonight, but we do want to recognize him. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
For those of you who came for the proclamations, we're about to get into the exciting part of the meeting, so if you want to scoot out, this is probably a great time to do so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Community service, stay right there. Thanks. Good job, guys.
Let's move forward. Item five, public comment. This is a comment for persons wishing to address the City Council on matters not on the posted agenda. I have no speaker cards, or there are members of the community who wish to speak at this time. Seeing none, moving to item seven, approval of the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine, will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless removed by members of council staff, public request, et cetera. Again, if there is a no vote, please let me know, and we will have that recorded. Mr. Malpe, anything we need to poll?
Nothing this evening.
Gentlemen on the dais.
I would like to have some discussion on item F.
Seven.
F.
F as in foxtrot.
The last item.
And I just had a question mainly for Councilman Grocott. On the approval of the calendar, there's a little part where it says that he voted no. Was that enough to register your no vote on the last, on the minutes?
Oh, yeah, on the minutes, I read that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have discussion on seven D.
Seven D. We are pulling those two items. Chair, will entertain a motion. Move approval of items seven A, B, C, and E.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Grisilli.
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Royce.
Yes.
Mayor Amon.
Yes. Let's quickly move to item seven D. Mr. Royce, you polled.
Yes, this deals with spending $200,000 to California Department of Transportation for the Holly Street project. It appears, you know, in reading the report, that with California funds limited, that a lot of projects are not going to happen. This tries to ensure that something does eventually happen with Holly Street exchange, although now we'll be paying for it. One of the things I wanted to, I guess I don't have much problems in proceeding, as the staff report has said, though, but when we think about Holly and the exchange and overall Holly Street, this is such an important, critical exchange for the city of San Carlos. It's basically Holly Street is the only northbound entrance to 101 North, you know, and so it's very critical. And with PAMP, we got other development going on on the east side. It's very important. What I like council support on is maybe having a special either agenda item or future discussion item on two topics. One is an element that our Public Works Director showed, the volume on Holly Street, where our expectation was, of course, the morning commute, maybe a lunchtime at some, and an evening commute. That graph basically showed that traffic peaks in the morning at 7:00 and stays busy till 6:00. It basically keeps that high level all day long. And secondly, the discussions that we had in the presentations on the staging and some changes to the Holly Industrial Street. And so even though Hexagon made some recommendations in this area, I think there's still a lot of discussion going on. And based now on the exchange, which is probably not going to happen for five years plus, with PAMP coming onboard, In-N-Out Burger, I think it may make sense for us to have some discussion, maybe something we could do over the next two or three years to enhance traffic flow in the Holly Street corridor. So that's what I would ask, if there would be any other support from council members to do that at a future meeting or agenda item.
We can take that under my advisement to agendize further. I'd have no problem with that. I would look for a motion to approve seven D, though.
Just to chime in really quick, wouldn't this make more sense to kick down the traffic and circulation and have them vet it and then bring it up to us?
Mr. Royce?
Sure.
We'll move that forward as a request.
I move approval of item seven D.
I'll second that.
And is there any objection? Without objection, that'll be the order. Going to seven F. Mr. Klein.
This was Mr. Grocott.
Oh, Mr. Grocott, you pulled seven F? That's right.
Yeah, that's right. So I had a question for staff on this, if there's a staff member here. So the question I have is regarding to timing, because the concern I have is, you know, this, for the audience, this issue is to adopt a resolution authorizing submission of two applications for funding under the CCAG, City County Association of Governments Transit Oriented Development Housing Incentive Program. And the way this works is if these projects go forward, which are Wheeler Plaza and the Transit Village, as it's being termed now, Transit Village along the rail corridor, if these projects were to move forward and get approval, we potentially could be involved in an incentive program from CCAG where we would get up to 2,000 per bedroom plus 250 per affordable bedroom that would come to the city on a one-time basis. And my concern with this is kind of getting the cart before the horse and having an incentive program that might color our decisions as a council or even just the appearance of coloring our decision as a council, that we might be after the money, and that's why we want the project approved. And I, this council member at least, I don't know, we could discuss it from the dais here, but I'm concerned about that. And so my question to staff is, is it absolutely necessary in terms of some kind of timing that we submit this now? Could this not wait until the projects are looked at and discussed by the community?
Mark Sawicki, Economic Development Housing Manager. The cycle has been every two years that CCAG offers this. If we wait another two years, we could potentially approve either one of these projects and have a building permit pulled, at which point it would be ineligible. So we're better off applying. If it doesn't come forward within two years, we lose the potential funding, but we can reapply again, which is what we're doing with Transit Village.
Mr. Mayor, I guess what I would request, then, is that if we're, I see where we are timing-wise, and I could see going forward with that, but, you know, we can discuss it here, but I would, myself, would prefer from staff, then, if we go forward with this, that these kinds of incentive programs not be put to the council when we're considering this. In other words, not mentioned that, you know, you're considering this, and oh, by the way, there's this incentive program that we approved a while back, and, you know, we're in the mix to possibly get funding. I don't know how exactly we mitigate that, but I see that as an issue. As I said, I think it's getting the cart before the horse. I think it's a perception problem with the public that we might be doing something because we get the money, and that ought not to be.
Question for Mr. Sawicki first. Mr. Sawicki, so we've done this already for the Transit Village, and the two-year cycle went up, and nothing happened, right? And so we're reapplying, essentially?
Correct.
Okay. And can I respond, or do we want to wait for more questions?
We'll hold for just a moment. Are there further questions? We do have one public comment from Sam Hurstberg. Evening, Sam. Recognize for two minutes.
Nice to see you all. Yeah, we appreciate your comments, ma'am. We are concerned about an application being made before the City Council actually, or the Planning Commission even has a chance to, or the public has a chance to review the final EIR, or the Planning Commission and the City Council consider rezoning the property. So, you know, while you want to have something transit-oriented on this site, what density is still kind of up in the air? And we're, we have some concerns about some of the impacts of the density, which I think you've seen some correspondence. We've got some real concerns, and we would like to be heard and considered, that these issues considered. We are concerned that if you base this application on the density that's described, it describes the preferred project and not a mitigated project. And that is a legitimate concern, because you're predetermining what the project's going to be before you've even considered what the environmental impacts are, or whether or not that's the right thing to do based on everything that you know, because you don't know yet. You haven't dealt with the high-speed rail, EIR, or, you know, any revisions based on the final EIR. So I understand wanting to seek funding, and I think everybody wants to see something go in on that site, and, but we want to make sure that it's an impact, it's not going to have adverse impacts to our 60-year-old, single-family residential community when taken into consideration with high-speed rail. There's some real issues that need to be sorted through, and based on the description of density in this application, we take exception to that particular application. We don't have a problem with Wheeler Plaza, and we think that that is an appropriate transit-oriented development site.
Mr. Mayor.
Gentleman's time has expired. Mr. Grocott.
Given the public comment, or during the public comment, I took a look at all the whereas's, and I think perhaps to answer my concerns and the concerns of, I assume the gentleman is speaking for the Homeowners Association on the east side, perhaps if we could postpone this item for a bit and have the staff look at the wording of the whereas's and just weaken the whereas statements a little bit in terms of the housing numbers so that it dilutes that language, if you will, on giving the actual unit counts, and makes a more general statement about the incentive program without specifics to unit counts that might lead one to believe that this is the project we're approving or predetermining.
Is that a motion?
That's, yeah, I'm putting that up for discussion. I'm looking at staff on a response to that.
The applications are, the applications are due in the next week.
In the next week. So, Mr. Sawicki, is what I'm saying, is that allowable, that we can make this resolution without such specificity about the number of housing units?
The language in the resolution says that they may include.
I know it says may, but again, I'm looking at perception by the public, and any numbers at all may lead to some perception that we're predetermining the project, as the gentleman said. And so is there a way we can take those unit counts out and just talk about an incentive program generally?
The application requires you to say how many units you think it's going to be, and they use those numbers to allocate the funds across whatever projects are applying and get approved. So without putting the numbers in, it's not a complete application.
I see.
And these are just our best estimates. They only need to reach a 40-dwelling-unit-per-acre density. These projects are both currently projected to be higher than that. For example, with the Transit Village, if it were to be reduced in size, it would probably still be above that density, at which, you know, whatever it ends up being, that's the amount of funding that we would get, $2,000 per room or something less than that.
So would it make sense to kind of go with Mr. Grocott's saying, just to push this forward, if we could drop the numbers to whatever 40-unit per the acre is, and that's what's in the application?
That would also reduce the amount of funding that we would get.
So if it was to go higher than that, we wouldn't get the extra funding?
I can find that, I can find out, I don't have an answer to that right now. I believe it would be.
But if we were to go lower than what's put in here, we would get that funding, right? So the question is, if we aim too low and we go higher, we may not get it, you don't know yet. But you do know if we aim too high and go lower, we get all the funding.
I believe so.
We get the actual funding.
Yeah.
Because they use these numbers, then, to, CCAG will go out and request funding from their sources, and that's the basis for their request, so.
I mean, and based on that indecision, I'd want to keep the numbers in and aim too high.
Mr. Sawicki, with respect to the public comments and the concerns, the issue that I think I'm looking at right now is Wheeler Plaza. That is a project that the city controls, and the city can move forward. From the SAMTrans perspective, I've disqualified myself from discussions on the SAMTrans project, so I can vote on it here, but given that the EIR for high-speed rail has been delayed, it looks like it's going to be a ripple effect upon the SAMTrans Village, so I'd hate to lose out on an opportunity for Wheeler Plaza if SAMTrans Village is likely to be delayed.
They're not tied together, are they?
Well, I'm looking at this application that we.
Well, I mean, you could separate the application.
Yeah, there are actually two applications.
Right now, you have it together, but you could.
Yes.
You could separate it.
And again, this is really just setting ourselves up for the opportunity to receive money. It's not, it doesn't bind us in any way from approving the projects, or, you know, in the case of the Transit Village, we've applied before, and it didn't happen, so.
We did this before, so.
So, gentlemen, what is your pleasure?
I'll move approval. Well, I want to clarify, because we've done this before, and I sit on the Subcommittee with Councilman Grocott for the Transit Village, and this never came in discussions when we kind of mentioned to push back the EIR because of high-speed rail and stuff. This was never brought up by staff, like, oh, we have this money, or anything like that. I don't think it's going to cloud the judgment of the council in any way, because there's a lot of money out there that is incentivized, now, like, housing money, we have to use it, or we're going to lose it. So I don't think it really clouds the issue at all. So I'd like to move approval of item seven F.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Just to clarify myself, I will go ahead and vote in favor of this. I think the discussion itself has raised the issue, and both with the council, the staff, and the public.
Fair enough. Question is called for seven F. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Grisilli.
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Royce. Mayor Amon.
Yes. Item eight, A, Reports to Council. Reports to council on key city projects by city department heads and staff. Item eight A is a report on sustainable community strategy, a regional effort to prepare the Bay Area land use, transportation, and a greenhouse gas emission strategy. Mr. Sevay.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm here to talk about the Sustainable Community Strategy this evening. Sustainable Community Strategy came out of Senate Bill SB 375, and back in 2008, the idea behind 375 was to mix your land use, your transportation, and your environmental planning together on a regional basis, and make sure that your regional ideas were good and sound, and that you have a local regional process when you prepare numbers and things for local communities. Historically, for instance, the Association of Bay Area Governments would establish the numbers of houses that should be built in communities throughout the Bay Area, and they would do it based on their formula. There was really not much of a working relationship. So SB 375 says you got to do the land use planning, the transportation planning, and you have to have a local regional process to do so. In terms of the overall approach, again, it's this new Sustainable Community Strategy is about aligning the investments for housing needs land use planning. But there, and there's two components that will come out of this, two key issues or areas there. One is a regional transportation plan, and the idea there is to align the Sustainable Community Strategy and the land use pattern in our roadway system on a regional basis. And then the other is the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, or RENA, process. That's a very new process that we just went through in 2007 and 2008 for the very first time. And they're going to ask us to go through a new process where they establish housing needs for the region. And then what they're also saying, though, is there won't be any change to local authority over land use decisions. However, a lot of times what However, a lot of times what we'll end up doing is we'll, we'll have these thresholds from regional agencies and we will be required to measure our local development projects with those regional agencies. And you can't go over their thresholds in, in some cases. And in terms of some more specific purposes and goals, what they've said is that they want to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from vehicular traffic in the, in the Bay Area by about 15% by the year 2035. Our recent climate action plan, I think, puts us in a very good position to be even more aggressive than what they're seeing they want to achieve here. So, we're, I think, fortunate that we did this work with our community very recently and came up with some numbers that you see there on the screen, which I, again, think are going to be much more aggressive than, than the region. And then the, how's the region's populations at all income levels? Again, historically, those numbers have come from the Association of Bay Area Governments and now we have this new approach, this RENA approach. So, this sustainable community strategy would end up with a 25-year land use plan for the region and it would forecast land use patterns in the area. And we've already started to work with the regional agencies on this. They've asked us for numbers that are in our general plans that are projected for our community for population, transportation and climate. And again, I think that fortunately, City of San Carlos is in a good position because we recently adopted our general plan, housing element and climate action plan and we have some very good policies for smart growth. In terms of this regional transportation plan that they're talking about, they want to link, link the land use choices and transportation investments and, and also address the GHG or greenhouse gas reductions. And, and, and so what they're saying is they want the policies like transit-oriented development, which reduces traffic trips and, and increases housing near transit, to link up with investment opportunities that they will provide to cities in the future. What we'll be required to do is go back to them and tell them about the Holly Street Interchange project, that that's one of our issues, that we want to reduce traffic in our community and make traffic flow better for development in our community. In terms of the RENA process, as I noted, we just went through this process a few years ago and, and back in 2007, 2008, it was, it was a new thing. Again, historically, ABAG had, took the approach with local governments that they decided what the numbers were for housing agencies. They came up with the formula, whether agencies liked it or not. It led to a lot of consternation and pushback by local agencies historically. But in the, a few years ago, there was this new process called the RENA process and they said, if you agree as a region, as a sub-region, to get involved together with other cities, then we'll give you a 2% reduction off the top of what we think your number should be and we'll allow you to negotiate with these other agencies. So, it came with two incentives. At that time, the city council believed it was a good idea to get involved with the other 20 agencies in the county in 2007, 2008. So, the city council passed a resolution joining this sub-region and allowed us to negotiate with the other cities. It was good for the City of San Carlos, I think. We started out with a number around 800 and we negotiated it down to 599 units by the year 2014. The only unfortunate thing about this new SCS program is they're going to reopen this process and restart the clock. So, we didn't get to the end of, of the first clock where we had a reasonable number, but hopefully this next RENA program will allow us to have another good negotiating process. And again, they're trying to get the housing and the land use integrated with the transportation investments. There are also a number, a couple of other regional agencies, the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, they have air quality limitations that we need to be aware of and, and the Bay Area Conservation District, and, and they want to make sure that all of those plans are integrated into one document, which could be a good idea as well. Now, in terms of existing efforts, we, we've done a lot of work in the last few years for land use planning and smart growth. One of the things that we did as a community just a year or two ago, as part of our general plan process, there was this, another new program that came out of the regional agencies called Priority Development Areas. And they said that what the city should do, what we'd like you to do is say where in your community you're going to have growth and, and more density near transit. And where are you going to do, if you're going to do transit-oriented development, where is it going to go? So, we want you to nominate these areas. You apply to the regional agency. You have to map it out and show them where it is and tell them what you're going to do there. And we did that as part of the general plan process. This is our map of our plan development, priority development area. It's based on El Camino Real and Old County Road here. This is the area where we'll have the most housing growth in the next 20 to 30 years based on our general plan. This is where we projected it to happen. That's where we have our higher density, mixed use and multifamily development. And so, the idea is to, what they said is we have funding sources from the federal government. We'll give that to the regions and then we'll distribute it to the local agencies who had the foresight to plan ahead. We did that and we were rewarded last year for doing this with the Transit for Livable Communities grant that we got for $2.2 million for the east side community transportation connection project along Old County Road. So, they're really, and, and we just got another $50,000 grant for the updating of our zoning ordinance. So, they, they really did, I have to say, put their money where their mouth is, as it were, in, hey, if you do this forward planning, this forward thinking, we'll, we will provide grant sources for needed improvements in your community. As I noted earlier, historically, there's been a different kind of a process, sort of a top-down process, but what SB 375 said is you have to work with the local agencies. You can't do it like that anymore. And so, what they've set up is this partnership idea where the local jurisdictions will be working with the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, Association of Bay Area Governments, and we'll be working through CCAG, which is sort of our local parent, and CCAG will be assisting us with setting up meetings and things like that. And then there's a regional advisory working group. Not sure who's going to be on that working group yet. In terms of the process itself, there's three stages in the next year. So, the first stage would be this initial vision scenario in February 2011. They're going to release this. They've been asking us about our general plan, our housing element, our climate action plan. We've been feeding them the numbers that, that we have projected for build-out in our community. Then they'll come out with this detailed, a more detailed scenario in the summer and then in 2012, they're talking about having this preferred regional growth scenario in 2012. Some of the potential benefits I've sort of sprinkled throughout the, the presentation. They, they say that they will reward cities, cities for choosing to advance some of these ideas about strategic planning and growth. They say that they will have some infrastructure, set up an infrastructure bank for things like the, I hope, the Holly Street Interchange Project and other local transit capital improvement projects. So, we'll take a wait-and-see approach, but so far, they, they have been supportive of local agencies. And finally, the role of City of San Carlos, what's our role? Our local planning efforts, I think, have been, have been good. We've kept ahead of what we've seen in the region and, and what we think some of the smart growth ideas are out there. So, I think San Carlos is in a very good position with its new development proposals. Our zoning update is moving forward currently, so we're able to kind of keep an eye on this. And then we'll be going into the RENA negotiations and we need to cooperate with the regional transportation plan and tell them what we want to do in our community so that they know and that potentially we can get funded for those things in the future. It's, unfortunately, it will take a lot of work, I think. The RENA process took a lot of staff work and involvement. There's a lot of meetings and a lot of reporting and, and making sure that they're doing fair things for the local communities. And city council guidance will be required as well. We'll, I'll be coming to you as these things come forward and, and reporting to you. So, the next step would be to begin that RENA negotiation process, I intend to bring forward a resolution at your next meeting for your consideration to join this sub-region again and start this negotiated process for the housing units up again. And then you see the other steps as we, as we move forward in this process. That concludes the presentation. I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sawicki. Gentlemen, this is a non-action item, so questions, discussion? Mr. Grokot.
Mr. Sawicki, I, what I see here a little bit is a state coming our direction to some extent. In other words, you know, there's always been this sort of top-down housing planning issue from the state, as you've said, you know, telling us what the units ought to be and so forth, and then there's been this pushback. My question is, you say here about local control, that it's going to leave it to local control. So, what I'm wondering is if there's been any discussion among your peers in planning and pushing back up to the state, discussions about getting credit for, for instance, in San Carlos, I consider us to be a pretty well-planned city and I've said this before from the dais, when you, when you look at our housing jobs balance, we actually provide more housing than we do jobs currently. So, we're on the upside and it's other communities in, in, on the peninsula and most notably, San Francisco and San Jose that don't provide the housing for their workforce. So, I'm wondering if there's any discussions that might give credit to cities who, who have been well-planned and maintain well, good planning in terms of looking at these numbers and what gets allocated. Number two, I'm wondering if there's any discussion about, again, among your peers and pushing back up to the state, about us IDing our own infill projects, what's reasonable for the projections on population growth and also tying population growth to infrastructure, the ability to, to, you know, have kids in school and the schools being able to maintain that, that population that, that is, is forecast. Also, water, sewer, and the, and lastly, the ability of a city, and this is something I, I think we've seen ourselves struggling with, the ability of a city with its tax structure to support police and fire as it's needed for a given population, number of households, et cetera. Is there any discussion among your peers about all those kinds of things and maybe pushing back again up to the state on those issues?
Yeah, I guess on the first point, there's always, there's constant discussion and it's almost a competitive discussion between cities because we're all vying for funding and luckily, we have been in the, I think the council and the community has been out in front and more progressive in terms of smart growth. And in the last few years, we've done, we've been really some of the first city to do a lot of things. And so, a lot of cities come to us and ask, well, what'd you do or how'd you do it? So, yes, I, I think there's a big dialogue going on out there and, and it has to continue and we have to really make sure that we, as a community, are out in front of some of these other communities and think, a lot of it is about ideas and, and what to apply for, how to apply for it, how to position your community for these grants and infrastructure improvements. And that goes to the second question is, you know, really, they're talking about transportation. If you, you know, we'll give you money for some transportation improvements if you lower your, if you agree to these lowered greenhouse gas emissions and also if you make commitments to put housing in certain areas of your community that show that it's better for everybody to do it that way. They don't talk much about, as, as planners, we talk more about the service levels for police and fire when it comes in relation to CQ and can, is a new development going to put that out of, out of balance in a community? We, we make sure that there, there's discussions about that balance all the time. But the, the regional part of it, I think they are looking at rewarding cities. That's what they're telling us. They're using an incentive approach this time and they've already kind of started to roll this out. One last thing, I think that this is a national issue, that regionalism is, is now coming to the fore and it's being pushed by that Housing and Urban Development Department at the federal level. I think they, it's not just housing anymore. I think they figured out that they're also called Urban Development at the Department of Urban Development, Housing and Urban Development. And so, they're talking about regionalization and they're putting the money, the federal government is now saying, we're incentivizing the regions. You guys figured out, work together and do something right for everybody. So, I, I know that's a long-winded answer.
I appreciate it.
Hope I get it.
Gentlemen, further questions? We have one speaker slip. Sam. Name of Sam, recognized for two minutes.
Thank you again. In terms of doing something for everybody, our neighborhood is really, really concerned about the development, this PDA, transit-oriented development and the impacts to our neighborhood. You know, if the transit station should move a quarter mile south, which is proposed, why not put more housing on the west side of San Carlos closer to where that train station will be? If that's the plan to put the train station, it seems like the only high density is being proposed at that site and with, you know, if we increase, not only that, but if we increase transit from 100 train trips a day to 400 train trips a day, you're going to have all that noise going into that neighborhood. You're going to have impacts on views, shading that occurs, and it just seems like a disproportionate impact on a residential neighborhood compared to other areas in the city which haven't been explored. And I, I express the same concern on the grant and I have the same concern about this development, that it's, that this PDA concept, that it's disproportionately impacting our neighborhood. I understand the need for higher housing. If you had higher housing and a train across the street from your single-family resident and you were going to be, you were concerned about those impacts 24/7, you, you would be expressing the similar concerns and, and not trying to be unreasonable, but really are asking for you, you to listen and for you to understand our concerns. Appreciate it.
And the gentleman yields the rest of his time. Gentlemen, any further discussions? Seeing none, we're moving to item 8B, Report on the Partnership Policy. Director Long, good afternoon or good evening. How long is your report?
Yeah, it depends on the, the wishes of the council. It could be five minutes to as many as 10. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Doug Long, Parks and Recreation Director. This report stems from a strategic planning session that the council held with the management team where one of the goals was to develop an outreach plan that would involve service clubs and nonprofits in meeting some of the unmet needs that the community has identified. As you know, things have changed. They've changed because of the economic downturn. They've changed particularly in Parks and Recreation as we have fewer resources that we can rely on a steady basis in terms of general fund dollars. We're looking for help from our, our partners throughout the community to help us sustain some of the programs, events, activities and facilities that we have throughout our city. In doing so, what we've been doing in the past, we've partnered, as you can see in the staff report, we've partnered with many different organizations, community-based organizations for different needs that we've had. But these agreements have always been tacit. So, this policy is an effort to make some explicit identificating, identifying statements regarding policies, partnering policies, what partnering means, what we're trying to get at. It has some guiding questions that, that would be asked in, in entering partnerships and this is kind of an overarching policy that includes a number of examples of partnering, which would be sponsoring, which would be facility development, which would be helping out with a, a variety of programs. And these are designed to augment what the city is doing and sometimes it could be in supplement to what we're doing. But again, the idea is to, to put this down, for people to take a look at, to come to a meeting of the minds. of the minds, and develop effective partnerships. Now, this has been presented to the Parks and Recreation Commission and discussed. They had a couple of recommendations that I've incorporated into this as this document has come to you. This evening, I'm presenting this for you for discussion and any kind of feedback that you would like to give me. If they're minor, we can continue with the policy and make those changes and bring it back at a later date to council for approval. If some of the policies are, excuse me, if some of the recommendations are kind of major, probably would go back to the Parks and Recreation Commission for their consideration once again, before it comes back up to the council. With that, I would be happy to hear any of your recommendations, suggestions, or feedback about this, and answer any questions you may have.
Excellent. So recommendations and feedback. Gentlemen. Well, start with Mr. Gropot.
I seem to be starting a lot tonight.
Well, you're off on that side. We'll go to this side next.
That's okay. I'm just curious about the review by the city attorney, if any, on any of these. I almost, I reluctantly ask that because we've done so much in this community that's kind of on a handshake, and we move on, so I don't want to turn this into something that becomes legally contentious, but I'm just curious if Mr. Rubens has had an opportunity to review this and have any comment.
No, he has not, but certainly before this is presented for council approval, we can have our city attorney take a look at it.
Thank you.
Mr. Royce.
Yeah, so overall comment, and I come from, you know, several years of involvement in many of the community events, our summer concert series, Sister Cities, Hometown Days Parade, and seeing already several levels of sharing between the city and nonprofit organizations in building the spirit of what we have here. So I think it's a good idea to get more formal. To me, the general feeling, though, is, you know, to keep it simple. I think a lot of the applications and the questions that are asked and so forth, I think there's a way to get a lot of the information you need in planning purposes done, but still keep it on a simple side. And I would like to make, I listed, I think, four areas I'd like to have you consider for implementing or inclusion in this policy, or think about on how we would implement them. The first area would be in how we, you know, utilize and share our city's facilities and equipment and tools and so forth. When you have an event, a lot of times you'll have it in a park, which is city property. If you have a volunteer day for cleaning up a trail, making, you know, orange vests available, or shovels, and having a park and rec truck pick up litter or garbage at the end of the day, garbage cans or bags and stuff. So those are just examples of having the sheriff at events, you know, as we did with holiday lights to treatment there. Sometimes we need those types of resources. So while we're really, of course, the intent of this is to minimize our city resources, there are assets, there's parks and there's equipment, and we don't want our people using lawnmowers, you know, and cutting their toes off, but there are some things that we need to incorporate in is to try to be able, when we say share, be able to be friendly in letting them use our assets and our equipment. Second of four areas, which I think is the most complex, and I'll talk about it the least because I don't know the solution, but it's insurance. So when Sister City does a Taste of Italy event in a downtown park before it was sponsored by the city or Sister Cities, now organizations, including even San Carlos Together putting on a concert series, there's no insurance. And you know, when you have a lot of people together, you don't know what's going to happen. So somehow we need to somehow solve the liability concern or potential loss if something was to happen. Third, the city has tremendous assets in its ability to market from a webpage to the, what am I going to say, the billboard down at Circle Star. I mean, the city knows how to, putting brochures out at events and so forth. I think that is definitely a part of helping our partners successful in their events. And the last one would be if there's a potential for some seed money. A lot of times, the intent of doing a function is, are people going to show up? Is it going to be fun? But yet, many times, it's financial, and you need sponsorship. But sometimes there's events where, and I think about the Healthy Cities when it started for the city, is maybe a good example, or Weak of the Family. I think when Don Eden started that, you know, he asked council to approve some money to get that going. So if we could, ahead of time, put together some sort of fund, I call it seed money. If there's an idea and we just need to get it kick-started, I think some funding might be something that we could serve. So those would be my four recommendations. I don't know how they fit into the policy, but I want to make sure you consider them when we talk to the partner on what our role is. I think those are really important areas, especially the first two are very important, I think.
Mr. Grisilli.
I don't really have a lot of comments on the report except to thank Mr. Long and his staff and the Park and Recreation Commission. I'm sure they spent hours on this going over, at least one meeting, if not two or three. Anytime you go out and do something different, there's always going to be some questions one way or the other way. I think the comment by Mr. Gropot, obviously, to have legal staff review it, and Mr. Royce's points on insurance always strike me directly. But having said that, this is the way of the future. We are going to be in an à la carte, as I call it, way of running government, and this is one of the areas, Park and Recreation, that's going to be that way. So I applaud Mr. Long and his staff and the Park and Recreation Commission for, again, as we mentioned earlier, getting out in front of this. And with the Park and Rec Foundation, hopefully, we can accomplish some of the goals that are in here.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Nothing much. I spoke to Mr. Long today about naming rights, and that's in a separate policy, so I don't really have any questions, other than, you know, just to thank you, Mr. Long. It's a good report, and just go out and get that money.
Yeah, that's right.
And Director Long, I would echo this. Thank you for all the hard work. It is clear, you know, the citizens of San Carlos absolutely love our park and recreation programs and some of the new things you've done in downtown with the Night of Holiday Lights and the Goblin Walk. It's still just always, I'm incredibly proud when you see, geez, we blocked Laurel Street, and we can absolutely pack the thing. It's amazing. I would look obliquely at Mr. Grisilli and say, with regard to the insurance question, if it's something that potentially CCG may look at. I'll throw that as.
Yeah, I can check on that. I don't know how that would be. Again, it's always a question. I think I'll check with Mr. Rubens and see perhaps some of the liability and things, and then I can bring that up if it's appropriate.
I've got to imagine that other jurisdictions taking part in CCG would have our same concerns.
Right, although in the four years that I've been on the CCG, or four to five years, I can't ever remember that we had anything come up like that. But again, as I mentioned earlier, this is a new day, so there's a lot of new things that are going to be coming on, and perhaps that's one of the things we can work on.
Worth a shot.
Through the mayor, if I may add, actually, ABAG Plan through the Association of Barrier Governments is the city's insurer, and we participate in several insurance programs that could and do accommodate these types of requests.
If we could follow up on that, Mr. Malpe, that would be tremendous.
Did I take care of that for you quick enough?
I think you did. That just rocked. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving to item 8C, quarterly fire department report. Chief Fry. Evening, sir.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Doug Fry, fire chief. I have submitted to you a little bit of a different format this time around of the quarterly report that I give to you, and I just wanted to say that I took to heart some of the comments that came from the Tri-Data Report about information, about data, those types of things, and this is just the beginning of some new changes that I'm submitting for you, and I've also agendized this for a future Fire Commission meeting for some additional discussion on that. So I've submitted this report to you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have in regards to anything that's on there.
I'll start to my right this time. Mr. Grisilli.
Well, Chief Fry, I literally did read every line on this, and thank you very much. This was a very, very comprehensive report relative to incidents and details and employees and focus, you know, on personnel and so on, and I thank you very much. I know this didn't take five minutes to put together. One quick question, you talked about total alarms, or I guess incidents, I'm assuming you mean incidents for 2010 was 4,501.
Correct.
Is that a combination of Belmont and San Carlos?
That's correct.
Do we have any kind, and again, I apologize, I should have called you on this ahead of time, but you may know the difference of the percentage of which.
I have not gotten that. I expect that at the end of the month. I usually get that from dispatch.
Thirty days after.
Right. I asked them for that, I put in the request for that, and I will have that.
I certainly understand. I just, like I said, I'm just extremely impressed with the level of detail that's here. I think it gives a really great overview to exactly what you do in so many different areas of it, so I thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Klein.
Chief, so we've talked about this with the Tri-Data Report, so I'm going to go over a couple of things that I have issue with in your report, and I understand it's a work in progress, so, you know, if you want to jot these down. There's a couple of things, but the way you break out the calls, it's not really terribly detailed as what you mean by certain things. You have fire and explosions, let's take that for instance, and you have, in this quarter, we had 21 fires or explosions. But we know via the Tri-Data Report, last year, we had about 12-plus in San Carlos, so if you double that, that's 24 in Belmont and San Carlos, and you're saying here, in one quarter, we had 21. So I understand that, you know, if we can get some more, you know, because these aren't all actual fires, and I understand that, so we need to break it out a bit more. Also, when you have.
What I want to put in here is the structure fires and then other fires.
Exactly. You have hazardous conditions. Now, I know all of those don't trigger a hazmat call.
Correct.
It would be great to see a breakout on a hazmat call, how many times our team's actually going out, because we know it's about 40 times a year, but we have hazardous conditions just in one month as 11. So, you know, we need to see a bit more of a breakout on that. I understand with good intent and false calls, that's fine with me. Also, in regards to what kind of reads like a journal of certain calls, I was wondering if you could explain to me, what is the barometer for triggering a write-up of a call? Because in your report, you write up about certain calls, and I'm wondering, what's the trigger for it to be written?
What I've done with that is calls that I think would be of interest for you to know what's going on in the two communities that are of some significance.
Okay.
You know, don't necessarily want to know about the medical aid, but you may want to know, you know, next month, a little bit more about the vehicle accident we had this morning on Cresview Court, you know, that type of thing.
Okay, yeah, because I was just, when I read this, I was like, it doesn't really read to me as what triggers it or what's supposed to be included. You know, you have five lines on a hazmat response, which is very important, we're out there for three hours, and you have eight lines on a non-fire, a jack-in-the-box. So I was just like, okay, I was trying to follow where you were going, but I would like to see more of a way to quantify this. I understand that due to what we have programmed now, it's hard for you to give us like a spreadsheet of all the calls and what it does, but if we can slowly try to get there on quantifying, these are the medical calls, you know, this is how many there were, and breaking out the fire, you know, especially fire calls, where they were, who responded, and that kind of thing. That way, it's more of like a data dump for you, and then you can do the entries for the, you know, the highlights. But then we can have an attachment that's just essentially a data dump, so we can get in there and really see what it is and where the time's going and what kind of calls we're actually getting. Because this is a great start compared to last quarter, and, you know, I understand it's a work in progress, but as much data as we can possibly get, and I understand that you have a small staff.
And I'm wondering if, you know, when we talk about the Fire Commission meeting.
I think that's where, yeah.
That, you know, maybe more of an annual report too may give you a lot more of that information.
Exactly.
You know, than the quarterly's type of a thing, but certainly we can.
Yeah, and, you know, we're going to have this discussion pretty shortly, in a couple of weeks here again, so that's all I have.
Mr. Royce.
All right, yes, just, again, I noticed the difference in the report, some really good data, great, great start. Also noticed your five-year anniversaries here. We have a David Gillette Markway, 20 years, Kirk Johnson, 30 years, and then there's a 35-year here, Doug Fry, a few years of service. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Gropot.
Again, I'll just ditto what the rest of the council members have said about reading this. It was interesting to read through. I just had one question, and that has to do with the engine, where you talk about rebuilding the engine and so forth, and I was just curious about the impact of the budget or contingency fund on that.
It's definitely going to have an impact on the budget. That was an unexpected expense on that engine, but it is one of the reserves, and we're trying real hard to keep it within the maintenance budget. But with this year, with the things that are going on, one of the things I'm really focusing on with the fleet is that at the end of the time of the agency, that the equipment is all 100%, that there's no issues around it, everything's been pump-tested, all the vehicles are operational, there's nothing that we'll have to think about in regards to engines going out, transmissions going out. So I'm really spending a little bit more time with making sure that essentially the vehicles are certified and ready to be transferred to whatever agencies are going to be doing fire services in the future.
Thank you.
Mr. Klein, any follow-up questions?
One follow-up question, chief. When you talk about department personnel, and I don't want to put you on the spot because I think this is going to be a Fire Board topic, but you mentioned that we've, one member has moved on, and we have 16 members testing currently for Alameda.
Correct.
Are we going to have a discussion at the Fire Board about running the department if we are to lose personnel?
Yeah, and actually, that number's been reduced to four. There's 16 that were in the process, it's now down to four that are in the chief's final process. So I may have more information as that moves forward, but 16 people took the, went in through the process.
Okay, four are still moving on, but that probably will be a good discussion for us to have at the Fire Board to talk about, you know, the what-ifs.
Right.
Okay, thanks, chief.
Chief, I do want to acknowledge that you took great initiative and went through the Tri-Data Report and gave us better data. I really do appreciate that, and thank you for your report. Look forward to seeing you at the Fire Board meeting. Moving to item 9A is consideration. Mr. Randall, would you be kind enough to fill out a slip before?
I did fill out one, but I accidentally put down.
Oh, was it this item?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I put the wrong letter. That's where the problem is.
Mr. Randall, you're recognized for 10 minutes.
Thank you, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, city councilman, my name is Brian Randall, I'm a resident of San Carlos. Mayor Ahmed, why did you tell the county board of supervisors, right now, we do not have a fire department? That's a fair question, and I would appreciate a reply.
Does Mr. Randall yield his time, or do you have more comments?
I do.
Please continue.
I do. Move along, thank you. Gentlemen, we have been three months now without a Fire Board meeting. When will there be another?
I'll answer that.
Thank you very much. I do appreciate the free speech, but I would like a response.
Mr. Randall, this is your time, please continue.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
This is your time, please continue.
I don't have anything more to say right now. I've asked my questions.
Okay. Mr. Randall, you yield your time?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Through the chair, for the sake of the audience, can I mention there is a Fire Board meeting coming up February 9th, I believe, chief? And we had three meetings that were canceled, two due to the chief's behest for lack of agenda, and one because of one of the issues we will be dealing with tonight. So we will be having a meeting February 9th.
And I'm looking if I can address the question about what I stated that the board of supervisors, I'd be happy to address it at some point, I don't know if I'm, I'm looking at the lawyer.
Yeah, our normal policy is, the public comment is just that, that we don't have a give-and-take. It is permissible under the Brown Act to respond to a specific question, that the particular question doesn't seem to be something that the entire council will have to deal with in the future, but it's up to you whether you want to respond to that.
For the sake of Mr. Randall, I will send an email with my response. Moving on to item 9A, Mr. Sawicki, this is a consideration of redevelopment agency letter to Governor Brown.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council, Mark Sawicki, Economic Development and Housing Manager. As you are well aware, the governor has proposed to eliminate redevelopment agencies in California as part of his budget proposal. This would have a devastating effect on San Carlos, which receives a net $4 million of local property. on San Carlos, which receives a net $4 million of local property tax increment to its RDA after sharing $1.9 million of it to the county, library, school districts, and other taxing entities. This revenue is used to first pay debt service on $18 million in agency bonds and other debt outstanding. The remainder is used for capital projects and economic development. Also, by law, 20% of RDA revenue is dedicated to development, rehabilitation, and preservation of affordable housing. Since the RDA was established in 1986, it has provided funding for a long list of community benefit projects, the most prominent of which are the Great Separation Project, the Laurel Street and Industrial Road, Streetscape Improvements, San Carlos Elms, L'Oriola Oaks, and many other great projects. We currently have several large capital projects planned, like the Holly 101 Interchange and Wheeler Plaza redevelopment that will not proceed without the RDA. Under the governor's proposal, the RDA or a successor entity would only receive enough tax increment revenue to meet its existing debt obligations. In the next fiscal year, the state would take $1.7 billion from RDAs across the state and shift the remainder to cities, county, school districts, and other taxing entities based on existing Prop 13 tax allocations. Assuming flat tax revenue growth, the city's general fund would receive about $240,000 next year, but the net loss to the combined city and agency would be about $2.1 million. The following year, the general fund would receive about $570,000, but the net loss to the combined city and agency would be about $1.8 million. This net loss of potential revenue will be compounded as property tax receipts grow. The governor's proposal is surprising, since it's contrary to Prop 22, which passed by 61% last November, and prohibits the state supposedly from taking any more redevelopment money after the $2 billion it took last year. It's also surprising in that it does not, does nothing to fix the state budget beyond the next fiscal year. What it does do is shut down the only local tool available for ours and hundreds of other communities across the state to rebuild infrastructure, produce jobs and affordable housing, and expand our economic base. In response to the governor's proposal and in consultation with redevelopment council, staff is taking a number of actions to protect existing funds and assets of the agency to the extent possible. As members in the League of California Cities and the California Redevelopment Agency, we are being urged to add our city's voice in the advocacy effort to defeat this proposal. This includes engaging with citizens, the business community, the media, about the community benefits of having our RDA and what is threatened to be lost. It also includes educating our local state representatives who have to approve this proposal about the devastating blow it will have on our city. Staff has prepared the draft letter in your packet to send to the governor, and I apologize that our current Assembly member, Rich Gordon, was identified incorrectly in the CC line. We can make that and any other changes at your direction. I'm available for your questions and comments. Thank you.
Perfect. I'll start from my right again. Mr. Grisilli.
What comments?
Mr. Klein?
No way to color the language up a little bit, so he gets the point, is there? No, I have nothing. It's, it's a good letter.
Mr. Royce?
Fine.
Mr. Grokot?
Couple things. One is just a wordsmithing thing, and I, you know, I guess it doesn't, it's not real important, but I, when I read this, this sentence from a policy standpoint, eliminating redevelopment makes no sense. It sounded rather informal to me. And I was trying to think of something else to put in there, but I, I don't have anything for you. I just, again, feel like it's, it sounds a little informal. On a, from a policy perspective, I'm struggling with this, because I, I look at this list of, the second to the last sentence of the one, two, third paragraph, where it goes through what's been done and what needs to be done. And, you know, I, I agree with the idea of having a redevelopment agency to mitigate blight or, or get rid of blight. I can see the benefit where, you know, there's things that a redevelopment agency can do, and it creates jobs, it creates construction, and all that's beneficial. And I understand the whole concept of, you know, having the, the tax offset and the money being plowed back into the RDA. I think folks know, the staff knows, the council knows, citizens know, I do not agree with the interference in the market of housing and set aside for low income and so forth. I just, I, again, I think it interferes with the market. I think the market best reacts to housing needs and is best left alone, and doesn't need the RDA or the government to be involved. So I really struggle with this letter and what it says, because half of it's talking about things I agree with, and the other half's talking about things I disagree with. But I, I don't think I would get the vote of the council to change the language. So I'm just struggling myself with how to vote on it, because, you know, weighing these two, two things, these two policies.
Understood. The only thing I would add to this is, we do discuss in this letter the recent passage of Prop 22, which specifically is now a constitutional, part of the California Constitution, protecting the revenues from this, from this particular vehicle for local uses. The California voters approved it fairly overwhelmingly. I believe it was, I'm looking over at Mr. Moore, it was 65%?
Correct.
So there was significant voter approval to say, these local monies should stay local. The governor is going to have a challenge just on the constitutionality of this raid. We have stated before that, from the state perspective, if it's not nailed down, it's theirs, and if they can pry it up, it's not nailed down. So I have no problem signing this letter, and would probably get more colorful, but I'll, I'll probably reserve that when, when I'm face-to-face with the governor a little bit later. Gentlemen, this is an action item to send the letter, and it does require a vote.
I move approval of item 9A.
Second. Motion is second. We're going to go with a roll call.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Excuse me, is this a redevelopment agency item?
Oh, yes, it is. Yes.
Okay.
Director Grisilli?
Yes.
Director Grokot?
Okay, Mr., what is your term when you're-
I think I'm a chairman now.
Chairman? Your comments convince me. I'll go ahead and vote yes.
Director Klein?
Yes.
Director Royce?
Yes.
Chair Ahmad?
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to new business. Item 10A, consideration of a letter seeking informed consent from Lieberd Cassidy and Whitmore, LCW, to allow LCW to provide advice and counsel to the Belmont-San Carlos Fire JPA regarding department and employee rights and obligations and other matters within the statutory scope of bargaining. Mr. Malpe?
And that pretty much sums it up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, Jeff Malpe, interim city manager. This item before you is, is being brought at the request of the Fire Commission staff for the JPA, as well as their legal advice from Lieberd Cassidy Whitmore. The LCW provides legal services to many, many public agencies in the state of California, and to no surprise, the Belmont Fire Protection District, the San Car, Belmont-San Carlos Fire JPA, and the City of San Carlos are all clients of LCW. And that hasn't been at all problematic in terms of fires. They're all separate entities, and when they've been negotiating their contracts, there has not been a conflict of interest in the past. The fact that we're in a, currently in a dissolution process, however, does create a potential conflict of interest. However, the staff from both the City of Belmont, the Belmont Fire Protection District, who also serve as the JPA staff, as well as staff here in San Carlos, feel like our interests are currently aligned in making sure that the Fire Board Commissioners all receive the same professional legal advice from LCW in terms of what the JPA's legal obligations are in regards to meet and confer and any legal labor obligations as part of the dissolution process. If in the future our interests in the dissolution process should create a conflict, we can simply dissolve the, the waiver here so that we can remove LCW from the process and, and go out and hire our own independent attorneys. So this is really a one-time action right now that will allow Rick Bolanos to come in to a Fire Board meeting in closed session and provide a general scope and overview of the process for the Board and Commissioners, and be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Klein?
Well, I was just going to jump in, and this, this is the item, this is the reason we postponed the January meeting, is we are taking this up tonight. The Belmont Fire Protection District is taking it up tomorrow night, and we need this in order to start talking about our employees. So we, that this is, will allow us to jump headfirst into the labor discussions that we're going to need to have due to the dissolution.
Any further questions?
I have a question on the fiscal implications, because it says there, there are none. And I understand there might not be any to, at least not immediately, that's direct to our general fund. But I suppose there is, there has to be some implication to this fiscally that would be imposed upon the, the fire agency. Am I right?
As far as I know, I mean, that maybe would be a question for the chief, but I don't think there's any cost here that is outside of the existing budget. I, I believe LCW typically provides, is, is on retainer to typically provide this type of advice to the Fire JPA, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
Looks like the chief is not in agreement. Further questions?
I move approval of item 10A.
Do we have a resolution?
I'll second that.
A resolution. Is there any objection?
Yes, I will. Just to stay consistent on how I've been voting on dissolution, I'm going to vote no on this.
Very good. Let's go with a roll call.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Ahmad?
Yes. Item 10B, consideration of joining the California Contract Cities Association. Mr. Malpe?
Yeah, the California Contract Cities Association approached the city through my office in the last six to eight weeks, having become aware of some of the contract work the council's done with public services here in San Carlos. The association's membership is primarily Southern California-based. There, as we talked about, particularly in the police discussions, there's quite a few contract cities in Southern California. Arguably, San Carlos could have been viewed as a contract city even before the police services were contracted with the county. Through our works over the last 20 years in terms of regionalizing our garbage contract, our collection system at the treatment plant with SBSA, the work with the franchise for the telecommunications, and other projects in San Mateo County, where we've used a lot of JPA models to regionalize those services. That's something fairly new and probably a little less common in Southern California than the more traditional contract approach, which we've been using for some services now. This city really, it wasn't before and certainly is not now considered to be a full-service city. Joining this association would put you in the company of 40 or so other cities in California who do business in a similar way to this city. They have advocates in Sacramento. They do several annual events throughout the state. Their monthly meetings are primarily Southern California-based, and as such, for Northern California cities that join, there's like a, a small price break, as their offices and monthly meetings and commissions and things tend to be in Southern California, though they are actively branching out into Northern California right now to expand the membership. It's the, an additional cost of $1,800 per year for the city's membership. You receive a directory and several other items and invitations to their annual events and whatnot in Sacramento and Southern California. Seems to be a good organization from what I can tell. They've got a 50-year history in the state. They're respected in the Capitol, and, and throughout, throughout the state, League of California Cities they partner with on a number of, of issues. So I'd be happy to answer any additional information. We provided you with a little bit of a background and, and a connection to their website, so you could check out the organization a little more before you made a decision.
Gentlemen, any questions?
I, you know, it's, of course, I asked Mr. Malpe this morning why an item for $1,857 is even on our agenda, but I understand why it's on our agenda. I, we, we've always sort of gone along and done what we needed to do here. I know when I came on council, we were, Mr. Grokot was, was the only person on there. When I came on, there was a lot of contracting going on. We went to the other model of employees. Now we've gone back the other way. I don't know that I need an organization to, that, that we necessarily need this organization to help us along the way, because we aren't going in one direction, per se. We are reacting to what we have to do in our city. So personally, I just, I don't necessarily see the reason to, to be joining this. I appreciate the staff report, and certainly all information is good, but I don't necessarily see why we need to, to do this when there's, to me, an immense amount of information of, out there about this, as well as the fact that we're sort of, you know, we've always been sort of unique in the way we handle things. So I won't be voting for this, this item tonight. I will not be voting for it.
Further questions? Mr. Klein?
Yeah, Mr. Malpe, you talked about, they have a, essentially, an arm in Sacramento. So this is more for an advocacy approach, correct? This is in case, you know, we need, we need a voice up there to help us out with some, something we're doing.
Yeah, I'd say that's a similar organization to the League of California Cities, with a more specific focus and, and a little bit more experience dealing with contract city issues.
Okay. That was my only question.
Mr. Grokot?
You've mentioned the League twice now, and one of the notes I had in my, when I read this, was, what do we pay to be a member of the League? And it appears to me that some of the services and the reasons to belong are duplicated. And so where I'd be going with that, obviously, is, you know, maybe with respect to Mr. Grisilli, it's a small amount of money, but join one or the other, but not both.
Sure. The dues for the League of California Cities are higher. They're in the $12,000 range per year, I believe. They are, as I've said a number of times, similar type organizations. The contract association's smaller, much smaller than the League, and represents some more specific interests. They have a more specific focus in terms of, of their advocacy for cities.
Okay.
So-
Mr. Royce?
Question. Do you think we would know our success with this organization within a six-month period, or would it take a full year of working with them until we really know our benefit?
Oh, I, I think you'd want to do a full year, to have a full cycle, to see their events, send somebody to their, their annual legislative event, their conference, to get a sense for what they're about.
Since there's some hesitancy, maybe one idea I would have, I would support this and not require that this come back to council, that our city manager 12 months after initiation, you know, write a one-page report and a determination on the success of this program, the benefit to San Carlos, is it's really doing the objectives we are really looking for here, rather than make it a consulting deal that we just get into and we start paying every month. I think we really need a 12-month evaluation, one-page report, coming back to council, and have, or just a report to council, the city manager making a decision for future use.
Gentlemen, no, no questions. I think my, my position on this is, I am concerned that what we are seeing in state politics is a number of groups have, have an agenda of how they would like city governments to do their work, should you have exclusively employees, or should you have exclusively contracts. I look at this as an opportunity for the City Council to preserve our choice. This is not a dictate to say, we're going to go one way or the other, but there are strong forces at work to say, you are going to do your work one particular way, and it's going to be this way or no way. So from that perspective, having an advocate in Sacramento fighting for our ability to have a choice is critical from my perspective. With that, I'll look to your pleasure, gentlemen.
Mr. Mayor, just to echo your thoughts, I, I agree. And one thing that Mr. Malpe brought up struck me, that there's 50-some members of the, of this organization, and there's, what, 400-plus cities in California? So we would be part of the minority, being viewed as somewhat of a contract city. So it's important for us to have an advocate up there based solely on our ability to have that choice and have that decision. So I completely agree with you, and I'll be voting in favor of this. So with that, I move approval of item 10B.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Any motion?
I made a motion.
I'll second that.
Sorry, missed that.
Discussion?
Mr. Grokot?
Is there any interest on the council, and with respect to what Mr. Royce said, I could agree with that, and based on that, I could vote for this. But what I would also like to see, and I think you could see where I was going with my questioning, I, I don't my questioning, I don't see the necessity of being members of both, the league and this. And perhaps after a year's time, we might, you know, part of that report might also be a recommendation from staff that, you know, to give us their perspective, that we either drop the league and go with this, be members of both, or just go back to the league and leave our advocacy in Sacramento being with the league. But I'm really questioning that, even though it's a small dollar amount, I'm questioning the need to be members of both organizations. And part of that, too, is, you know, when they have events, then that takes staff away because they, you know, of course, want to go to those events and see what's going on, see and be heard and so forth.
So, Mr. Grokot, is it your, your desire to make a motion to amend for a one-year report?
Well, Mr. Royce has already made that recommendation informally, so if.
I think you should make an amended if we want to really add it into the.
Okay, so I would amend the motion to include a first-year report with recommendation from staff on our membership in the league, this organization, either or, or both.
We'll take that as a substitute motion.
Okay, and I'll second that.
We are voting on the substitute motion for approval, requesting staff for a one-year report. Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Grisilli?
No.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Ahmad?
Yes. Before we move to item 10C, I see three young citizens yawning in the back. Gentlemen, are you okay? All right, you've got a ride home, everything is good? All right, you're not here for punishment or anything else, are you? Okay, good to know. Welcome to city council, and we'll try to make it more exciting. Item 10C, discussion of fire and emergency services in San Carlos, update on responses for request for proposal and extension for the RFP deadline date. Mr. More, before you bring, go forward, you're going to give us a report. Are you going to have an action for us to take?
Yes, and it'll be a relatively brief report unless the council has questions.
Thank you. Mr. More.
Thank you, Mayor Ahmad Brian Moore, Assistant City Manager. Just some highlights, and again, the council's seen a number of updates from us, so I'll keep it brief tonight. On October 18th, the council authorized an RFP for fire and emergency services. In November, we gave you an update on the initial responses. On January 7th and 14th, we gave you two more updates. I think the key thing to be aware of at this point, we do have one detailed present, proposal from Redwood City, which is also endorsed by the city of San Mateo and local 2400 Firefighters Union. And we have a second proposal, or a portion of one, from County Fire and Cal Fire. Staff has met last week with Redwood City and that group, along with John Montanaro that some of you will recall from Tri-Data, to begin the process of working with the Redwood City team to clarify their proposal, tighten it up a little bit, and also we saw some, or I saw some opportunities to perhaps, perhaps save a couple of jobs along the way and do some other things. So I think we've made some good progress there, and we anticipate having additional meetings with the Redwood City team. Along the way, we did attend a meeting of the Finance and Operations Subcommittee of the Board of Supervisors. They have continued the item of providing the Cal Fire County proposal to San Carlos until February 15th at the subcommittee level and until March 15th at the board level. They have requested that the city of San Carlos extend the RFP deadline to accommodate those two milestones, as well as to provide two weeks for the county staff and the fire department staff to submit a formal proposal, which would take us to early April. In light of the fact that the council has expressed indication receiving multiple proposals to evaluate, and the fact that the county proposal potentially has the ability to save the city in excess of $2 million per year, staff believes that it would be appropriate to honor the request of Supervisor Groom and Tissier to extend the RFP deadline for a couple of months till early April. So that is the actual item tonight, although obviously staff would be happy to answer any questions you have about the process or the materials that we've received to date.
Thank you, Mr. More. Looking around for questions. Mr. Grisilli?
I don't, I don't necessarily have any questions. I have some comments, perhaps, and some other things, but I don't really have any questions, Mr. More.
Mr. Klein?
I have no questions.
Mr. Royce?
Questions.
Mr. Grokot?
Just for clarification, we had already extended the RFP deadline.
Uh huh.
By that deadline, we had only gotten a proposal from Redwood City? Or is it considered that we got proposals from more than?
As of the deadline in January, we got a proposal from Redwood City and an initial request for an extension from San Mateo. When we put out at that time the possibility of an extension at that point to February, the county manager's office indicated that they, too, would be interested in an extension. And then when we went to the board meeting most recently, the board asked for a considerably longer extension because apparently at the county level, they have this process where they have a committee one month and then the board another month, et cetera. So that's, those are the three extension requests, if you want to call them that, that we're working on. The one that takes us out the farthest, obviously, is the one from the county supervisors.
Okay, thank you.
Gentlemen, there is one request for action.
Do we have any public comment on this?
I don't have any. Is there any?
Okay.
Seeing none? Gentlemen, we're, again, the request for action was to extend formally the deadline.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Grisilli?
I, I support the proposal by staff to extend it to April 1st, and I had some other comments. And if the city attorney will please stop me from speaking if I'm going in the wrong place here, I'll try to sort of wave or something.
Could I, could I ask for the motion to be made in a second, and then I'll give you any discussion point?
Absolutely, sure. I'd be happy to make a motion to authorize the city clerk to extend the RFP deadline to April 1st, 2011.
We have a motion to extend. Second, we have a second. Mr. Grisilli?
I don't know whether I can add this to the motion or whether it's even appropriate, but having looked at this situation for a number of years, obviously being on the fire board, even though I haven't been on the fire board for the last year or so, a year and a half, I know there's an awful lot of moving parts that are going on in this county, not only with the county and the state, but with Redwood City, San Mateo, Foster City, hopefully Belmont. And I know that we have a dissolution date of October 12th, is it? I'm not sure the exact date.
Number 12.
Of 2011 for the dissolution of our J P A with Belmont. And I'm, I'm trying to find, figure out a way, and I don't know, again, the city attorney will stop me, if there's some way to add to this motion or to just get a consensus of the, of the, of my fellow council people to extend that date. Because I really believe that we're all under the gun. Certainly Belmont tomorrow night is going to be certainly under the gun. They haven't even, hadn't gotten any, I mean, we're eons ahead of where they are. They have a report tomorrow that's going to be given to them, and they basically have less than eight months to go at this point. And I really feel that there's an opportunity here with so many moving parts that in the next six months, we have an opportunity to perhaps put together a better program than what we have at the moment with just ourselves, trying to work perhaps with one or the other agencies. So I'm looking for a consensus if, and perhaps the other council members will agree or disagree with me, relative to putting forth a, I don't know whether it's a, it would be called a, not a motion, because it's not on the agenda, so maybe we can't vote on this, but just a consensus that we would approach Belmont and say, we're going to, we'd like to extend out this time, and then hopefully they would agree, and then we have, again, more of us working together into more of a, more of a regional situation, which I favor. Now, the other members of the council may not favor this, but I favor more of a regional situation with, you know, San Mateo, Redwood City, Belmont, San Carlos, Foster City, you know, whoever wants to join this region. And I think we have a better opportunity if we take our time a little bit more as opposed to pushing for this October date. Now, I'm sorry, yeah, getting out of the, out of the realm of the.
Just before that goes any further, and the point was made, but it's not really on your agenda tonight, but it's certainly an appropriate item for discussion at a future agenda, whether or not the council would like to direct staff to approach Belmont or to bring it up at the, direct our members to go to the fire board, or whatever method you'd like to, to employ. But it's, it's not on tonight's agenda, so you can't really add that to a motion or discuss that further.
You just no fun at all.
Yeah.
I guess through the chair, I'd make a couple of comments. One is, the council should be aware that we did meet with Belmont earlier today, and we have a tentative agreement on the division of the apparatus and vehicles. We are making significant progress on the dissolution. I think Belmont's staff would tell you that they see tomorrow night's meeting as a significant milestone because they believe that they will get, they potentially will get direction to move ahead with their own fire department tomorrow night, and I think we'll know a lot more after tomorrow night. If they do move in that direction, I think that tells us one thing. On the other hand, if they express some concerns about the timing or want to explore other options, as Mr. Grisilli suggests, I think that the agenda, potential agenda item, let's call it, that you raised, makes a lot of sense to bring up at perhaps maybe then our next council meeting.
Okay. And again, I don't want to violate any laws or rules, but I wanted to make those comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Certainly. Mr. Klein?
Yes, to go with this, fairly annoyed that we have to keep pushing our RFP bid date back, but I understand there's a lot of moving parts, and there's a lot of people sticking their nose where it really doesn't belong. But, you know, I went to the meeting of the Board of Supervisors. I understood they wanted 30 more days to look at this, and then they need some time afterwards. And Chief Belleville got up and said that he'd be working with Chief Skinner on putting together a tentative skeleton of a possible second regional department in the south part of the county, because Cal Fire is a regional department already. So, you know, I'm all for looking at these options, and when it comes to, you know, more time and however we're going to go about this thing, you know, five years, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, we keep talking about this and talking about this. And I understand that there's, some people are under the gun right now, but, you know, at some point, we have to do something. So I'll move, I mean, I will vote to extend this deadline, and I hope this is the last time.
Mr. Royce? Mr. Grokot? I'm sorry.
Well, I'm, I'm in agreement with the spirit of what Mr. Grisilli is, is saying, and I'm a strong believer that, you know, we're approaching this in the wrong way, that, and what I took from the comments from, of what I heard, the subcommittee with Carol Groom and Adrian Tissier, is that, and what I'm hearing from, you know, other places as well, is that, you know, regionalization is, is the future, really. We even saw that earlier tonight on housing and, you know, that sort of thing, the RENA numbers and so forth. And I really think we should be approaching regionalization with the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department, avoiding the cost of dissolution and, you know, the wrangling that could take place with that, both with our partner Belmont and with our partner Local 2400. So just like before, when I voted against dissolution, I'm going to vote against this because I don't, I don't think this is where we should be going, looking for extension. I think the fact that we're here and having to extend is showing us something about what other agencies feel about this whole process, that they're uncomfortable with it, and they would rather see all this effort and energy go towards a region, more of a regional plan. We even spoke about that from the dais and said we would look at that, I think it was back in September, and yet I've seen very little effort put towards that. Obviously, there is some effort being made, I think by, I think discussions go on sometimes with the Chiefs Association, Local 2400, I think has discussed it, and, you know, other, other departments have discussed it, the, these two chiefs from the cities on either side of us, Redwood City and San Mateo. I think it's the way to go, and I would rather, I know it would be a little difficult to do and might lose a little bit of face, but to go back to our partner and similar to what Mr. Grisilli is saying and say, you know, we, we need to look at this a different way. I think we could look at regionalization. I think, I do know that in Belmont, there is reluctance on the council to go with a regional approach by some of their members. But I think, on the other hand, if we spend all the time and energy that we're spending on dissolution towards building a regional model and working with some other agencies on that, and could show something that was workable and beneficial to all, that we might find with Belmont a change of heart. But until you can actually show some kind of model that might work, I don't think you're going to get that change of heart.
Mr. Royce?
Yes, I do, would like to remind council, I think in concept, we all agree that this last year, we made some significant changes to our city. And yet, for the past 10 years since the dot-com bust, we've done nothing, or we've done, well, we've done some, some things, but this past year is when we kind of accelerated our thinking and our decision-making, because we realized that that year, but also the signals were there for the past 10 years, that safety was unsustainable with economic growth and revenues that were coming in. So I am one very much for moving and accelerating the thinking and the decision-making. Sometimes the implementation is another thing. I think you need to do it right, it needs to be planned out and in phases and all those sorts of things. But when I got on council three years ago, I looked at maintenance, and I looked at park and rec, and I started talking about it. And I kept asking the question, because I said, I could get an envelope out here, a piece of paper, and start costing out, you know? How much does it cost us to maintain our parks? And what are we paying? And three years, two and a half years later, we, we finally got everybody thinking about that. We priced it out, and we're getting our maintenance done for about a third of the cost. We're saving two-thirds. Incredible. And so getting to fire, we could, I'm sorry, getting back to fire, I actually very much appreciate what San Mateo Fire is doing, some of the thinking on regionalization, working together, Redwood City, Foster City, Belmont, and San Carlos. And yet, a little disappointment on what have they been thinking about for the last 10 years? So I want to hold the torch out there. I've already lit in the torch. I think the thinking and the decision-making has to occur. It's a competitive market out there. And what we've asked, I think, with 30 days, we're only talking about 30 days, is we want, I think, as some people talked about a choice, I talk about it as, let's keep it competitive. Let's keep people talking. Let's, let's give us a choice. If you don't have competition, you don't have a choice. You know what kind of pricing you're going to get. And nothing's going to change on the types of services or the quality improvements or the retooling that occurs. So, gentlemen, you've seen us work this past year. You've seen what I've tried to drive. It's been a spirit of decision-making and thinking, let's get it done. And 30 days is a reasonable amount of time, and we'll do the right things for our city.
Just to correct really quickly, Mr. Royce, the extension's till April 1st.
Okay.
Okay. Just want to make sure everyone knows that.
Gentlemen, one of the, first of all, I am going to vote for the extension. I understand that there's a perception that there's not much going on, or you're not hearing much. I will tell you personally, I've spent many, many hours with elected officials from our neighboring cities talking about regionalization and how they're looking at it, too. The questions that have to be put forward for regionalization is, regionalizing for the sake of it is not a good reason. You regionalize because it means something for the city. It has to mean efficiencies. It has to mean our services get better. It has to mean that we can save some money. There is a negotiation tactic known as moving the goalposts. There is a negotiation tactic known as moving the goalposts. As you get closer, move the goalpost. As you get closer, move the goalpost. From this dais, when we first described putting together the dissolution letter more than a year ago, there was a request, give it 30 to 60 days because somehow or another a proposal will come up. Now, there was nobody from this dais trying to stop a proposal, but it never showed up. We've heard continually, give us some more time, give us some more time, give us some more time. We can negotiate darn near anything, but from the position of this chair, I'm not interested in negotiating the timeframe. There is a point in time we have to make decisions. There are many regional models we could look at, and personally, I'm excited at looking at as many as we can. With that, I'm trying to avoid skating close to anything that could come outside of this agenda item, and we'll call the question, the question before the council. Shall we extend the deadline to April 1st? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
No.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Ahmann?
Yes. Final note, looks like our Boy Scouts have left. I would just like to announce that our next meeting, especially for our season ticket holders, is going to be on Valentine's Day.
Are you serious?
I didn't make it up, but it's all about love, so I'll see if I can bring some candy hearts or something else, but folks, February 14, it's all about love. Any further, I'm sorry. Mr. Malpe, anything further?
Nothing this evening.
We stand adjourned.